Tonight, I am grateful for my friends that I was able to strong-arm and some just volunteered to come out. And since we're already five minutes into it, I'm gonna call the first panelist up and we're gonna hop right into it. Our first panelist is President James Troja, who is the new president of Juniata College. He's the 12th president of the college, was named on November 20th by the Board of Trustees. He comes to Juniata after a successful executive career at Heidelberg University where he was Vice President for Institutional Advancement and University Relations. He oversaw all elements of the institution's fundraising, marketing, and university relations efforts. During his last two years at Heidelberg, Troja helped raise more than $38 million towards a $50 million campaign goal and helps secure several multimillion dollar cash gifts, the largest in Heidelberg's history. He is also responsible for overseeing the record fundraising years for the university's unrestricted Heidelberg Fund. In 2011, Heidelberg received the 2011 Case Fundraising Award, one of 24 institutions nationwide to be honored. He also took leadership in organizing, writing, and launching Heidelberg's Academic Comprehensive Campaign for Excellence, the first in its kind for the university. In July 2008, Troja was asked to serve as Heidelberg's interim president for a year, and that time he oversaw several critical projects during challenging economic times, including refinancing the university's $17 million in-state issued bonds and leading the Heidelberg transition from college to university. As part of that transition, he oversaw the integration of a new marketing program and branding effort. Troja began his administrative career at Heidelberg in 2002 as Vice President for Student Affairs and Dean of Students, where he worked until he was named interim president in 2008. From 2003 to 2007, he also served as Vice President for Enrollment, where he helped increase enrollment by 19% in his first year and helped bring in the university's three largest freshman classes in three decades. He also led efforts to redevelop Heidelberg's website and implemented the university's first leadership academy. He began his academic career in 1993 when he was hired as Area Coordinator and Coordinator of Greek Life at the University of Evansville in Evansville, Indiana. In 1995, he was able to gain significant international experience of Dean of Students at Harlaxton College in Grantham, England, which is the British branch campus for the University of Evansville. By 1997, Troja has been named Dean of Students at Baker University in Baldwin City, Kansas, a post he held until 2001. A native of Cleveland, he earned a bachelor's degree in criminal justice in 1991, went on to earn a master's degree in counseling in '93, both from Edinburgh University. And in 2005, earned a doctorate in educational policy and leadership from the University of Kansas in Lawrence, Kansas. Is past president of the Ohio Association of Student Personnel Administrators and is a member of the Council for Advancement and Support of Education. Let's all give Dr. Troja a warm welcome to Huntington County. We're glad to have you and your wife Jennifer, as well as your three children. You're a great asset to our community and we look forward to your service as president. Next, I want to welcome my friend, Dr. Karen Whitney. Karen is the 16th president, starting in 2010, of Clarion University of Pennsylvania. Since assuming the presidency, Karen has led the university to articulate a mission to provide transformative, lifelong learning opportunities through innovative and nationally-recognized programs delivered in inclusive, student-centered environments. As president, she is responsible for encouraging students, faculty, and staff success, equity and diversity, civic engagement, leadership, and the financial stewardship of the university. Active professionally, Whitney is a member of the American Association of State Colleges and Universities, serving on its Committee on Economics and Workforce Development. Within the Pennsylvania State System of Higher Education, she's a member of the Council of Presidents. She is also a member of the Pennsylvania State Athletic Conference Board of Directors. Whitney has extensive experience of partnering with community organizations and civic leaders. Having served on a number of nonprofit boards, she currently serves on the Board of Directors for the Center for Rural Pennsylvania. Whitney has a PhD in Higher Education Administration from the University of Texas at Austin and a Master's of Arts in Public Administration and Bachelor of Arts in Psychology from the University of Houston. She presents, teaches, and researches and writes in the areas of higher education, higher education finance, administration, law, student development, and student facilities. President Whitney is joined at Clarion University with her partner, Dr. Peggy Apple, and their dog Claire, and we're glad to have Peggy with us this evening as well. Let's give her a hand. Next, we have Dr. Walter Osonovich, is a native of Springfield, Vermont. He attended Keene State College in Keene, New Hampshire, where he graduated with a Bachelor of Arts in English. He completed his Master of Arts in English from the University of Vermont and his PhD in English from the University of Delaware. In 1986, Dr. Osonovich accepted a position as Assistant Professor of English at Potomac State College, a small two-year regional campus of West Virginia University, where he found a home in the two-year college environment. In 1990, he was appointed as head of the English department and was subsequently named as his Coordinator of Institutional Research in 1994. Dr. Osonovich carried full-time teaching loads as well as conducted these duties through 1998. During that time, he was promoted to Associate Professor and then to full professor rank. He was granted faculty tenure in 1992. 1998, Dr. Osonovich was appointed interim Dean of Academic Affairs for Potomac State College. During his term as dean, Dr. Osonovich introduced successful new programming in criminal justice and early childhood education, revamped budget planning for academic programming, and expanded the college's early start program for high school students. In 1990, Dr. Osonovich assumed the duties of Director of Corporate and Community Education. In this role, he wrote a successful grant that united several business partners in funding a new workforce development center that included a state-of-the-art computer lab and a video conferencing room. He then was awarded additional grant funds to establish a distance-learning connection with the community college at Shepherd College that would allow students in the Potomac State Region to fulfill degree requirements for Shepherd College, associate degrees that were not available through Potomac State Curriculum. In 2002, Dr. Osonovich accepted an appointment as Dean of Academic Affairs at Corning Community College in Corning, New York, and by the end of his first year at Corning, his title was changed to Vice President and Dean of Academic Affairs. In 2007, Dr. Osonovich began his term as President of Pennsylvania Highlands Community College, which we're so excited to have a center open here in Huntington County. During his first year, he focused on streamlining internal processes, creating a new governance system, and strengthening relationships with external constituents. Dr. Osonovich resides in Johnstown with his wife Kim, who teaches in the Business Department at Mount Aloysius College. So I'd like to welcome all three of you up here now and we'll start our program. Okay, I have the exact same question for each of you, so the first one's a pretty gravy question, as we say here in Huntington County. What sets your institution apart from all others, or anything that you want to share about your institution, or yourselves for that matter? Let's start with Dr. Whitney. Okay, you have to turn those on.
Let's see. Is it on now? Can you hear me? Hello? I think so.
Yep.
Yeah?
Yes.
Okay, good. Good. Clarion University, I would say what distinguishes us is we started out as a teacher's college. Actually, in 1867, we started out as Clarion Seminary, and for several years, we were a Methodist seminary that continued beyond its early stages. And then we were picked up, for the longest period, we were Clarion Normal School, and then eventually became Clarion University in the early 80s. So we come out from a strong, strong tradition of teacher professional preparation. Today, we have over 6,000 students on two different campuses and various learning sites in the Clarion area, Clarion, Vanango, Butler County areas. I'd say right now, we're definitely, we've transitioned, we still have our education program, and very proud of that legacy of teacher education preparation, but we've also moved into many other professions, and our strongest areas of enrollment and program development are in the area of business, science, technology, and health professions and education. So I think we're that traditional public state university that is a hallmark of Pennsylvania higher education, and so far, we're Division II football, and we play two games and we're undefeated, so I'm thrilled.
Excellent. Walter?
I guess Pennsylvania Highlands Community College, in college years, we're in our infancy because we were founded in 1994 as Cambria County Area Community College. My predecessor worked with the board to change the name to Pennsylvania Highlands Community College as a means of, oh, we decided we needed to have a more regional mission and to serve a greater service area. When I came on board, I decided that service area should be the Southern Alleghanies, and in that process, we've established academic centers now in Huntington, Somerset, and finally, our most recent one, we just opened one in Blair County in the Altoona Logan Valley Mall. I think the idea of the community college, and it may be part of a later question, is we work on a sort of a comprehensive, open-ended mission. We offer students that ability to get two years of college that can then be transferred to schools as wonderful as Juniata, and where in fact, we have a joint enrollment agreement for our business administration degree, so you can seamlessly go from Penn Highlands and become a junior at Juniata and finish your degree that way, or to go to a school such as Clarion where we also have, especially with the new state TAOC agreement, the ability to now transfer almost any associative arts degree program, transfer all 60 credits into a four-year bachelor's degree at any of the state-supported schools. But we also have a very thriving non-credit workforce training branch of the college where we can do contracted training with business and industry so that anything that might be needed, we can customize training and help a business build whatever workforce they need to build. We also offer, I could call, social education pieces, courses designed to enhance or enrich life on a different level where people can get together and learn ballroom dancing, pet massage, one of my favorites, wine appreciation. I guess it's a way to give people a wholesome, social outlet that doesn't require necessarily whiskey and ogling women in tube tops. So we have that aspect of our institution as well.
Thank you.
Jim? Good evening. We do not offer pet massage, and I think it's just been identified here, the beauty of higher education, and that is of choices. Whether it's a public school, or a community college, or a private school like Juniata, Pennsylvania particularly, with the number of schools that are here, families and students have options, and that I'm sure we'll talk about in a moment in terms of the competitive marketplace that is higher education right now. Students and families have options, and so each of us are in tremendous demand to really articulate what makes us distinctive for families and for students out there. And I think for Juniata, for me, it resonates in a couple of ways. Number one is our size. We are about 1,600 full-time enrolled students, so very small, very personal education, a lot of flexibility of students with professors, and we have something called a POE, which in effect is a major that most people know, but it's called a Program of Emphasis, and you, students, have the ability to create, in many ways, their own POE that fits their needs and desires as a learner. That's a wonderful thing about a small, private institution is that students have tremendous flexibility in creating their own learning experience. The other thing I think that goes along with our size is the nature of the community that is Juniata. It's a small, private residential school. Over 90% of our students are right here. They are living in the borough of Huntington, they are residents of this great community, and they live and breathe the experience here. So in the residence halls, on the soccer fields, on the football field, on the basketball courts, in the theater, they are participants in their learning environment. It is more than just about going in class and going back to the rooms. There are all types of co-curricular moments that our students experience. I think academically, the program that would probably set Juniata apart, and I'll sit down, that's probably our science program where I believe that through the years, we have grown from maybe a more regional, small, private institution to a top 100 national liberal arts institution. Very, very proud of that fact. Many of you have probably experienced Science in Motion, which was established at Juniata, and we want to continue to deliver that, and we hope that we can continue to deliver that. But I would say academically, that's where we track a good number of our students. It's good to be with all of you here tonight, and I appreciate Mike for inviting all of us here to talk.
Thank you. Well, let's hop right into the questions here. One of the things I've heard a lot, being on the House Education Committee the past seven years, is are incoming freshman students, those right out of high school, are they prepared for college-level work?
I'd be happy to take that one. I'll be brief. I know we're running behind. I would identify primarily two areas that I have seen in my time within higher education. Number one, in terms of preparation, it would probably be more, I'm just gonna stand up, I'm pulling the cord here. I would say emotionally, we are struggling with, you know, trying to have our students understand what is involved, not just for the in-class experiences, but for those out-of-class experiences that I just talked about. And we are seeing more and more students that are coming to us that need some help emotionally to deal with the adjustment that is being at a residential institution of higher education. So that's number one that comes to mind. Number two would be writing. I think maybe, I don't know if my colleagues would agree, but I believe that the writing skillset, it can never be good enough, but I believe that's probably the one area that if I were to say to high school educators, it would be to try and give your students every opportunity to write. And write both fictionally and non-fictionally in ways that can broaden their minds, and because in all courses that we offer, writing is required, and I believe that we're dealing with most structurally, students' deficiencies in that area.
Thank you. Walter?
Community colleges, of course, we're open enrollment, which means that if somebody comes to us with a high school diploma, or even a GED, we're gonna let them in and do the best we can to get them through a two-year curriculum. And yet, I still think that the answer to the question as far as preparedness knows is kind of a yes and no kind of question, because I know my Somerset Center director likes to brag that the average GPA of his entering students out of high school is about a 2.9, which is probably as good as many universities ask for. At the same time, though, I think in the national trend with community colleges, and we see it at our main campus, between 40 and 50% of our entering freshman students need some form of remediation in either composition, reading comprehension, or mathematics. And so we oftentimes find that many students are, what, taking their entire first semester is taken up, getting caught up to the educational level they need to be at to be in college, which is kind of a problem, because they're losing time and they're also eating up the financial aid package that can allow them to get through. So there is a problem there for many students, and like I say, we do our best to provide a good, solid core remedial curriculum to help those students, but it's still difficult in the compressed environment of a college atmosphere to learn. If you aren't very, very good at something like algebra, by the time you get to college, it's not that easy to learn algebra at the level you need to learn it at in a 15-week, you know, three hours a week training session. So it is a problem.
To possibly add, from what my colleagues are saying, more people are in college across this country now as a percentage of our population than at any time in our nation's history. That's a good thing. That's a very good thing. Because with increased levels of education, you get better citizenship, more productivity, more civic engagement. Those are very good things in our society. At the same time, because it is so broad and there is so much participation, you do get some students who are very well-prepared, and we just gotta get out of their way because they're on a fast track to a great life, and then we have other groups of students that are hard-working, but they're not as prepared. So to answer your question is yes, and yes. At each institution, that's one of the reasons why what I call a good fit is so important, that students need to kick the tires and they need to take a true inventory of who they are, where their passions are, and be honest about where their capabilities are, and fit that to the right institution. Because we all do have these things differently, and we have different strengths. I think too also that, not just academic preparedness, but how prepared are you for your whole life? You know, financially, financial preparedness, emotional preparedness really leads to your readiness to learn and be successful. So I'm gonna take the answer to that one.
Excellent point. You know, the thing of this year, numbers have a more people in school than ever have at the United States. I often hear about the criticism of our education standards and the barriers that are compared to China, where they're, we're educated, China's doing laws, policies, and that's the more fluid. And so, you know, at the end of the day, we're doing a good job. We are educating the child, and we keep them on schedule here, but I don't need a quick answer, but just make it concise and discover the model. Life tuition is new to ride as quickly as possible, but you have to handle this in the top.
I'm gonna do this with some numbers, because I think that's the only way to make people, I think, understand what happens. When I arrived in 2007, our state appropriation averaged to about $2,100 per full-time student, and my county sponsor, that averaged out to about $900 per student, and then we could add in $3,300 in tuition and fees. That's a year's worth of tuition and fees, not a bad price, $3,300 bucks. And that came to about $6,300 per full-time student. That was our operating budget. Today, we've grown our enrollment by 40% while seeing a reduction in both state and county monies, to the point where my state dollars are $1,327 per full-time student. My county dollars are $621 per full-time student. My tuition and fees have now grown to $4,460 per student, and that, if you add those three up, we now have $6,408 per full-time student as an operating budget. So in seven years, we've increased the amount of money we operate on per student by $108. That's $15.43 a year. So when people talk about the rampant rising tuition, it's directly correlated to the dwindling support. As far as what we can do to make it more possible for the average family to send their kid to college and reduce debt, I really think that we need to get government leadership sitting down with education leadership, talking about what are the honest, actual costs of running a college, and how much of that should be government subsidy to keep the student loan debt at the lowest possible rates that you can possibly keep it. And that's, I think, what we've got to do.
I gave them the questions beforehand and said they didn't have to be gentle, because I know there is a direct correlation with state funding on everything, and that does trickle down to what we're able to do. Karen?
Clarion, over there, Mr. Ray, attention of Mr. Rosen's death. And in foil, they published a piece about Clarion, Clarion, a state-owned university charged through the force, and I had to say, and maybe the president, the founder, got a right, and one sentence, like, the work of Clarion University, this vision to the right, and making tough cuts, bringing business down, and position to meet future needs of students. So really, we're at a moment, not a tremendous thing, but throughout the whole country, of, there's a dialogue that was occurred between higher education leadership, state leadership, civic and business leadership, and our citizens. And the dialogue is very similar. What is the true cost to deliver falling of secondary dimension learnings? What's a fair cost? And who pays for it? What's the ratio, what's the relationship between student and family pay? And what's been this criticism we've got to our democracy? Was this state in danger? Because truly, the constitution of your state, one of the first responsibilities of a state is to support its education needs and services, and it's a fundamental part of everything on the team, and it's that what I love to be. And at Clarion, we're living out, we are, are very good business leaders. I know that I have a problem now over here, of, we are, thanks for folks off, it's very painful, it's very difficult, where we're engineering our feedback program to be more relevant, to be more engaging for our students, to be the user needs, to be the teachers, and it's very complicated, it's a poor moment in Clarion's system right now. So you're asking, like, what do we come up with, very poor, very wordy. At the same time, I would be asking the legislature to really be examining, get it called in those secondary, because there are relationships, right? We're worried. And I'll say this, those of you that have a college degree, is possibly, you didn't know this, but anywhere from 70 and 90% of your full-time degree obtained by the state happened today, can usually pick up 10 or 20%. Today, Clarion, Clarion College students pay 76% of their full-time, and the state is paying 20%. I'm not only going to explain, question is, is that high, is that what was asked by you? And I would argue that it's not, and we should pay for that, and it's a problem.
Thank you. And depending, we're gonna take one question after this, because these guys, I know Dr. Troja has to introduce a speaker here in a few minutes across town, so.
I'll just add, because I, sorry about that. I think they both hit it right, and talked about the fundamental means of achieving an education, and I support their passion for the discussion around affordability and the delivery of an educational model, and we all do it differently. And I was talking to a reporter before we came up here, and I think that's the beauty of our system, is that students and family have choices. And as the president of a private institution, we rely less on the state or federal government for support, although I would, of course, always welcome further discussions about Pell Grant money to help those most needy students that are seeking out an education, which constitute for us anywhere between 25 and 30% of our incoming students. So lest you think that we aren't serving a high-need population, Juniata still feel, I think fills, a need of a high-need population out there. I'll say this about college affordability. I think the discussion around value on what students and parents should expect from us as educators is gonna become the preeminent conversation around this country over the next several years. Getting back to what Karen just described about what is right, what should we expect from families, what should we expect from the institutions, it is an ongoing conversation for all of us. The demands on us to deliver what students and parents want is enormous, and part of the equation, and I'll be honest, is that we are expected now to deliver on all of the aesthetics that students and parents want out of education today, and that costs money. And so, just as we're getting arrows at us about rising costs, we are getting questions about where are your new residence halls, where are your recreation centers, what about your food service, where are your high academic programs, what about our facilities, what about this, what about that? And so we're hearing this pressure come from external sources, we're trying to deliver internally, and delivering internally costs money. And we are in a vicious cycle right now in private higher education about what is known as high-cost, high-discount. So Juniata right now is about $45,000 all-in, tuition fees, everything, about 45. On average, a student will pay for an education at Juniata roughly $17,000. That in itself is a problem, in that we have a sticker price does not meet the cost that a family's expected to pay. At the end of the day, we are often, cost-wise, as inexpensive as a public institution, but we don't, it doesn't appear that way on paper or on our website in other ways. That's a problem for private higher education, that's a systemic issue that all of us in the private side have to deal with. But this college affordability issue is gonna be one that's gonna be on the forefront of our discussions as well as on the minds of all of our families. of our discussions, as well as on the minds of all of our families and students seeking out an educational experience.
Thank you. I am trying to keep to our timeline. We probably could have done a whole hour and a half on this. Certainly, you know, I didn't even get into the cost of textbooks or anything. But these are, these are all superior organizations that are highly unique for our area. We have a state system school, a Clarion, a community college, and one of the state and/or country's premier private institutions. And, you know, college isn't for everyone. I'd say that, you know, it takes all kinds. But, you know, like my mother said, she made sure all of her children got some sort of higher education after, after high school, because in this day and age, it's difficult to navigate what the world has to offer, certainly. So the state has, certainly, I agree with Karen that, you know, that education is a fundamental part of our infrastructure. So, thank you. Is there any questions from the audience members? Any hands? I have one question here. There's a microphone up here if you want to come forward.
I just want to make sure that this question is asked, and it isn't directly to things that you've talked about right now. By the way, my name is Howard Crouch. At one time, it was Dr. Crouch, but I haven't used that for some time. But my field was education. I spent some 60 years with very ages of education, people in education. And I have, yet at my age, a very strong possession of the idea that education needs, needs to be, and needs to be fixed. And there's my question. I'd like to know from the three of you, if what I think is the major two problems with education could be corrected, how would you feel that it would affect you at the higher level? One is the lockstep system. By the way, the lockstep system is the first grade, second grade, third grade, grade levels. I feel that that's one of the worst things we have in education today. When it was created, back in the industrial revolution, it made sense. That's when it was created. We still have it. And it gets in the way of people who want to do things with individual students with individual needs. And there's the second miss. We listen to scientists. They're empirical in nature, and we like the idea that they touch and feel and all of that. We listen to them. Where are the social science people? They have ideas too. And really, I'd like to see them get out of their offices and get into meetings where they can share needs theories, behavioral modification theories, et cetera, to the extent that the laypeople, the parents, and the parents in Huntington County, for instance, who are desperately looking for something to fix their education problems, might help them understand what they need, the questions they need to ask. Because we, we don't see it there.
Okay. Does someone want to volunteer? I know we're, when I do my presentation, sir, we're going to be talking briefly about the lockstep system that you just addressed. Anyone? Karen?
Dr. Crouch, and since, if you had to work as hard as I did, you probably didn't because you're smarter than I am, I'm going to refer to you as Dr. Crouch if that's okay, because you've earned it, and I just feel really strongly about those kind of credentials in life. I think a couple of things that you might be talking about is, I mean, the education, both K-12 and higher ed systems in this country have been the envy of the world. And actually, I had a chance to go to China over the summer and go tour some other universities there. And we are still the envy of the world. We are our own worst critics on our own systems. And that's okay, as long as we understand, you know, that really, in many ways, we have solid systems, but the stakes are so high, I think it's okay to be continually dissatisfied if that will move us to continually improve. I'm very hopeful that a role like at Clarion with our education faculty and the roles of higher ed is to provide research and evidence-based solutions to the kind of concerns that you've expressed. Because I think, and Mike's going to talk about it later, I'm going to stay and listen to what he has to say. But I think I have to hope through creating dialogues and using research and using, and looking at things that work, not just what people think. Because with a lot of respect, a lot of folks who don't know anything about education have an opinion about education. If you notice that, I notice it. It's like how I think sometimes I can run a restaurant better than the restaurant I'm eating at that night, which is totally a bunch of baloney, but a lot of folks feel that about higher ed. I, in turn, like research and evidence and looking at particularly cutting-edge areas of brain research and our understanding of how children and adolescents and adults learn best, and applying those things to what the state priorities are. I think that's the dialogue to have, and then to be courageous enough to change our institutions to those needs. And, you know, education is a heavily regulated industry. That makes change very difficult. I'm going to also be a champion to deregulate education, so educators and leaders of education can make the changes that I think I hear you asking for.
Thank you. I certainly am one of those that would just like to have teachers teach. And as a history major, we could actually learn history. So I'm going to cut it off there. Sorry, sir.
No, I'm going to ask, re-ask my one question.
Okay. Can you make it quick?
Yes. If you let me. If I were lucky enough to get Huntington County to drop lockstep and go into individual education and use some of the things that are available, how would that, would that excite you? Or would that be just, oh, here's another one? I'd like an answer to that. How do you feel as an individual, that kind of individual education at the base?
I have to tell you this for myself. I can't speak to that question. It's a K-through policy question. I think you would have to ask people who are leaders in K-through 12. As a college president, I want people who are, I want people coming to Clarion who are ready to learn, who are excited to learn, and willing to work hard. So that's the best answer I can get. You know, depending on your opinion to that one, that's who we want in any way, shape, or form. But I think you might actually have to ask some folks out of K-12 that question. Not I want to dodge it, but that's my best answer.
Well, I think you're right, but I'm asking you now that you're in that hot seat right now for me.
Well, you got my answer, so you can grade it and email me the grade.
Just very quickly, I think one, one thing that we're doing that kind of breaks into that lockstep monster, I just kind of like that name. It is with our dual enrollment opportunities that we have in some 45 different school districts throughout Western Pennsylvania, where, you know, brighter, brighter kids can actually start moving into college-type classes as early as their freshman year, if they're ready and prepared. And we're building more on the idea of competency-based education as opposed to simply, you have to have a seat at age six in this room, a seat at age seven. So we're looking more and more at competency-based education. And in fact, just, I think it was Senator Wozniak who was quite pleased, I think his daughter earned 24 credits through our dual enrollment program, and was able to transfer in as a sophomore into Penn State University. So we're offering those types of opportunities and kind of cracking into that idea that you have to do a certain set curriculum, and then you start all over again and do it again when you're in college. So we're breaking into it a little bit.
And I realize that Juniata has the P O E, and a long time ago, that was one of the things I supported there. Great, I'm glad I did. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your question. Thank you to the panel. Greatly appreciated, and I'm sure they're available via email if you have further questions. So let's give them a hand. Okay, Glenn, I'm going to reduce your bio by 90%. Glenn is a colleague of mine. In fact, we used to sit, there was only one person in between us. He's a graduate of John Hopkins University, Dickerson School of Law, was former deputy counsel for Governor Ridge administration. He serves on the Shippensburg University Council of Trustees, and I'm sure if you go to Rep. Glenn Grell, you will get a whole litany of his achievements. He's a great guy, one of the smartest guys we have in the legislature, and I'm happy to have him here talk about pension reform.
Oh, great. Thanks. Keep an eye on the clock. Okay. Thanks very much. It's great to be here. I appreciate the invitation, and I appreciate all of you coming out. It was a very enjoyable drive up here tonight, or today. I'm not sure the drive home's going to be quite as nice or quite as scenic, but it was nice getting up here. My interest in pension issues stems from the fact that about four years ago, I was appointed by the House Republicans to their seat on the Public School Employees Retirement System Board. And as a result, you know, I'm learning more about pensions in the last four years than I ever thought I would. I also helped write Act 120 in 2010, which was the first crack at pension reform during the Rendell administration. And my district's in Cumberland County, right across the river from the Capitol, so I have an awful lot of state employees and school district employees that live in my district. So I want to make sure we address the problem. I want to make sure also that the state employees who are in the system or retire in the system will have their benefits there when it's time for them to get their benefits. But I also want to make sure that any pension reform proposal is fair to them, as well as fair to the taxpayers and to the government. I'll warn you, this is a very tedious subject, so if you doze off, I'll understand. I do want to whip through a PowerPoint presentation. It's really tedious if you don't have at least a PowerPoint presentation to look at. So with that, let's jump into the PowerPoint. I'm going to whip through this fairly quickly. I normally, when I go to school board meetings and talk about pension, it's usually about a 45-minute program without questions, but I'm going to whip through this as quickly as I can. Just some real basic background. Next slide, please. Pennsylvania has two public pension plans. This gives a little bit of information about SERS and PERS. The most important thing to know is that we have a whole lot of people who are either currently in this system, and you can see the numbers up here, or, you know, we have 300 and some thousand people who have already retired under this system and rely on this system for a monthly benefits check. The two funds are relatively, SERS is about half the size of PERS. SERS has about $25 billion in assets. PERS has about $50 billion. SERS covers all state employees, and PERS covers all public school employees. Between the two of them, they pay out over $8 billion a year in benefits to retirees. And these plans have both been around for about 100 years. The next slide describes how they work. They're both defined benefits plans, which means that there's a formula that I'll go over in a second, that describes how your benefit is earned based on how long you work and how much you make and all that. The employee is automatically enrolled in the system upon their employment. And in Pennsylvania, unlike some other states, Wisconsin notably, that you heard about a couple of years ago, in Pennsylvania, our employees do pay into their system, into their own retirement benefit. Employees under SERS pay 6.25% of their earnings into the system, and in PERS, they pay 7.5% into their, toward their own pension benefit. The employer also contributes annually based on an amount and a formula that's established under law and is subject to review by the system actuaries and by the state actuaries. And all of the money that goes into these funds is invested by the funds themselves. PERS and SERS do their own investments through the use of investment advisors, but they're not individually-directed retirement accounts. The bottom line of a defined benefit plan is that the risk of investment gains and losses falls on the taxpayer or the employer. Now, the next slide shows how the benefit is calculated under these plans. You take the years of service times a multiplier, which is set in law, and you take that number times the person's final average salary. And all of that works into a formula that describes what the annual pension annuity is to that person when they retire. I'll give you an example. This is a real example. I'm not going to give you the name, of course, but it's a person who retired as a career employee after 35 years. Now, that means they were hired 35 years ago, and at that time, their salary was $6,000. So they started paying into the system based on their salary of $6,000. And of course, over time, that has grown. This person retired in 2013, and their final average salary had grown from $6,000 to $81,000 over the course of their 35-year career. Over that 35-year period, the employee actually paid $89,500 into the system on his or her own behalf. Because of the investment earnings on that money and the employer contribution, the actuarial value of that benefit, or of their account at the time of their retirement, the amount they put in plus what they call a 4% statutory interest rate, the value of their contributions was $152,000. But it had a present value of $867,000 because of all of the investment earnings. Typically, in a defined benefit plan, about a third of the money comes from the employee contribution, about a third comes from the employer contribution, and about a third comes from investment earnings. So at the time this employee retired after 35 years, they were able to withdraw the $152,000 that either they had paid in or had been the 4% interest that I mentioned, and they received then a monthly benefit of $4,660 per month for the rest of their life. That's how a defined benefit plan works. You earn money, you pay money in, the employer pays money in, it's invested. When you retire, there's a calculation done, and that sets what you're entitled to for the rest of your life. There are certain ways that you can, the next slide shows there are certain ways that that money can be drawn out. You can get the maximum monthly benefit if you leave all of your money in the plan. If you don't take that $152,000 out, your monthly benefit is a little bit higher. You can also, if you're married and have a spouse, and you want to make sure that if the wage earner dies before the spouse, that there's also an annuity left for that spouse, there's a survivor annuity option that's available. The next slide just says, you know, what is this pension crisis all about? I try not to use the word pension crisis, but a lot of folks do, so that's really what's driving this discussion. Well, the next slide says, "We have an unfunded liability." What that means is, if every member of both of those plans decided that they were going to retire this year, or this month, or this week, and they came to the PERS or the SERS office with their retirement papers, the funds would not have enough money to pay those benefits right now. Now, fortunately, that's not going to happen. You know, some of those folks have just started working in the past year or the past month. But actuarially, you have to look at it that way. So for a purpose of the funded status of the plan, PERS is 33% underfunded, which means they have, if everybody came in today and wanted their money, they would be $29.5 billion underfunded. SERS is about half the size of PERS, and they have an unfunded liability of $17.9 billion. And that amount fluctuates, but that's a lot of money. And in order to make sure that those benefits are there for future employees, we have to address it. Now, briefly, I'll go into what the causes are. And these actually are about a third, a third, and a third. The first, for about 10 years, from the early 2000s until about 2010, the system, the employers were not required to pay enough money into the plan. They were underfunded. And that money was used to balance state budgets, it was used to balance school district budgets, it was used for other things other than paying into the pension fund. Now, for the past two years, that's not been the case. We have, under Governor Corbett, say whatever you want about Governor Corbett, but from my standpoint as a pension person, he has fully funded the pension obligations each of his first three budgets. The second cause, Act 9 of 2001, was a benefit enhancement. Now, at that time, the funds were over 100% funded. So the thought back then, and I wasn't in the legislature then, Mike wasn't in the legislature then, but the thought back then was, they could afford a benefit enhancement. So what they did, they took that multiplier that's multiplied by your number of years of service, they increased that from two per year to two and a half per year. So everybody in the system got a half a percent bump. And they did it not just going forward, they did it retroactively. So somebody who had been in the system, say, for 20 years, got 20 times a half a percent bump. So they got, with the stroke of a pen, they got an advantage. with the stroke of a pen, they got the advantage of having, as if they had worked 10 more years in the system. 20 years times a half a percent is the equivalent of 10-year pension bump. Now, they did have to pay a little bit more in their employer contribution to receive that enhancement, but that, the additional amount that was paid in at that time, didn't even cover the cost of that extra half a percent going forward, let alone the retroactive part. So that's the second piece of the pie as far as a cause. The third, of course, is investment performance. There were certain periods, especially 2001, 2003, if you had money in the stock market during those periods, you know what happened to investments generally. Well, the two pension funds were no different than that. Also, in 2008, 2011, when there were market downturns, those systems lost, their return was negative for those years. Okay, so now, what do we do? Options to address the program, if we'll go to the next slide. A couple of things you can do that have been suggested. One is to say, okay, we're tired of this defined benefit plan. We're going to put all new employees into a different plan. And you could put new people into a couple of different plans. You could put them into a defined contribution plan, which is like a 401K plan, which a lot of the private sector has gone to, or there are variations of that. One is called a cash balance plan, and we'll talk about more of that in a little bit later, and one is called a hybrid, which is just a combination. It's part defined benefit, part defined contribution plan. So you could put all your new employees into that plan, and that may be all well and good, but when you take people out of the current plan, you have fewer people, fewer employees paying into that plan, and as people retire, you're going to have fewer people paying into the plan and more people taking out of the plan because they've retired. So there are some shortcomings, especially to the defined contribution approach, which absolutely locks down the current defined benefit plan. No new members go into the defined benefit plan. Everybody going forward goes into a defined contribution plan. The second thing you can do is to put more money into the system. Well, we're going to have to be doing that through the employer contribution, and I'll give you some numbers on that that are pretty frightening and staggering a little later. We can't really increase the employee contribution because by law, that employee contribution is set at 6.25% for SERS, 7.5% for PERS, and there's a constitutional provision under the Pennsylvania Constitution that says you can't unilaterally change, the legislature can't unilaterally change the terms of somebody's pension plan. And the court, well, the Constitution says you can't impair an existing contract. The courts have interpreted that to mean that once somebody enrolls in the pension plan, you can't make those kinds of unilateral changes to the pension plan. So constitutionally, we simply, Mike and I can't pass a law that says, from this day forward, every state employee and every school employee is now in a defined contribution plan. We can't pass a law that says, from now on, instead of paying 7.5%, you're going to pay 9%. We can't pass a law that says your multiplier is going to go from 2.5% to 1%, unless we do something that is negotiated, the employee has agreed to that reduction, you give them something in exchange for that reduction, but it can't constitutionally be a unilateral change imposed on current employees. We can reduce the benefits that are paid out, or we can enhance investment returns somehow. Now, keep in mind that both of the plans have an assumed rate of return of 7.5% per year. Now, historically, that's a good number. Over the past 30 years, over the past 50 years, these funds have earned in excess of 7.5% average rate of return per year, but we're not sure that that's going to continue into the future. You know, if you're looking at what your own personal earning or investments are earning these days, you're probably not hitting 7.5% each year consistently. If you are, I'd like to talk to you afterward where you're investing your money. So those are some of the obstacles. Well, no, the next one is the obstacles to getting something done. The second one I've already mentioned, the contract impairment. The first is more of an obstacle to the taxpayer. If we don't do something, and I'll give you some numbers on that in a little while, if we don't do something, both the general fund budget at the state level and the budget of every school district across this Commonwealth is going to be significantly impacted. An obstacle to, in the case of enhanced returns, anytime you try to increase the earnings, you're taking more risk. So on both of the boards, we have to make some real serious decisions every time we make an investment. You know, how is this affecting risk? Are we taking too much risk with this investment? Are we chasing 8% or 9% or 10% and taking a risk that we actually lose? So chasing higher returns comes with a significant amount of risk, so that clearly is an obstacle. And some folks say, well, let's just go out and borrow it, spread it out over the course of the next 30, 40, 50 years, but really, if you do that, if you only do that, you're kicking the can down the road, you're putting this burden on our kids and our grandchildren. So if you do borrowing, you have to do it very carefully and very appropriately so that you're not ignoring the underlying problems. Taking all this into consideration, you know, I've sort of been talking how I spent my summer vacation. If you think back to June 30th, we were not able, as a legislature, to come to any kind of an agreement on a pension reform proposal. So I've been working this summer, talking to anybody and everybody who will listen, about, you know, what can we do to take into consideration all of those obstacles I mentioned, the interests of current employees, the interests of retired employees, the interests of the taxpayers, to come up with something that is constitutional and that works, that it's fair to current employees, fair to retirees, and fair to future employees. And what I've been talking about is this kind of an approach, and I call it a three buckets plan because there are three distinct pieces to it, and if you look at, you know, a ship that's taking on water, I think everybody sort of needs to pick up a bucket and help with the bailing out process if we're going to get out from under this obligation. So I divide it into three different categories. The first deals with, okay, what are we going to do with future employees? If the only thing we do is deal with the $45 billion debt on the backs of future employees, those future employees at the state and the school district level are going to have virtually no retirement plan offered to them because a $45 billion obligation on the backs of just our future employees would be overwhelming. So what I'm proposing in that area is a cash balance plan, which I'll give you the details on in the next slide, but in order to be fair to, before we can go to current employees and say, you know, we need you to be part of this solution, I think, and I feel very seriously about this, that we have to do something about the 10 years in which the state legislature and the administrations during those 10-year periods didn't properly fund the pension, and they didn't do it to the tune of about $9 or $10 billion. And if that money had been paid in, we would still have a problem. We wouldn't have a $45 billion problem, but we would still have a problem. So I think in order to be fair, what I've proposed, or what I am proposing and talking to folks about, is taking a piece of that $45 billion that we owe and putting that, doing a borrowing, putting that on a very disciplined, structured payment schedule so that that can't be tinkered with. The legislature can't put something in the fiscal code in the budget that says, wow, this year, we're not going to make those payments. So I think the discipline, first of all, it keeps faith with our current employees that says, we understand that we were part of the problem, and we're going to make up for that. So I propose what I call a tactical borrowing of $9 billion to make up for that and to infuse the fund with some money. If you put that money in the fund upfront, that has the effect of saving about $15 billion over the next 30 years because you're front-loading it. So that bucket, at least, is taking care of $15 billion worth of that $45 billion debt. Once we've done that, and once we've provided that there'll be a fair program going forward for future employees, and there will be some savings from this new cash balance plan, probably not $15 billion. Originally, I had hoped that each bucket would take responsibility for about $15 billion worth of the problem, and we've played with the numbers a lot, and we just can't come up with a cash balance plan that's fair to the employee and also saves $15 billion over 30 years. But once we've said, okay, future employees are going to have a fair, but affordable and sustainable pension plan, and the Commonwealth's going to make up for the 10 years of underfunding, then I think we can go to the current employees and say, look, we need you to be part of this solution, and I'll go through the two things that we're going to ask current employees to do. Very important is the next slide. So any of you who are retired, take note of the next slide. Nothing in anything that I'm proposing or discussing will affect anybody who is already retired from the system. Having said that, and said that twice, nothing affects anybody who's currently retired because that's often not heard. It's said, but not heard. Let me go into the details of what I'm proposing. This cash balance plan would only apply to new employees, and what it would consist of, the employee making a contribution about 7%, which is about what they're currently making, that's 7% of their payroll goes into it. The employer would contribute 4%, and once an employee has 15 years of service, we would kick that up to 5%. So there's some advantage to staying with the Commonwealth or with the school district over an extended period of time. And then we guarantee a rate of return of 4%. If the actual rate of return is over 4%, the employer and the employee would share in that upside savings, but the employer is, you know, needs some of that to take care of those years when the rate of return is not 4%. So you take all of that money, it's invested by SERS and PERS. At the time of retirement, you would have, or this future employee would have a certain account value attributed to them, which would be the combination of everything they put in, everything their employer put in for them, the 4% guaranteed rate of return, plus any upside that they've earned on the interest rate over 4%. And then, that would be annuitized so that if they had a, let's say they had a half a million dollar value in their account at the time they retired, they would, that would be converted to a monthly annuity so that they would receive a monthly check of a fixed amount guaranteed for the rest of their life. So it pays out like a defined benefit plan. The monthly benefit, once it's established, is guaranteed for the rest of their life. The second piece of the bucket, the second bucket, is a general borrowing, which I've already mentioned. $9 billion goes into the two funds. About $6 billion would go into PERS, about $3 billion would go into SERS, just because of the relative size of the two funds. The debt service on that would not be paid by the funds, it would be paid by the general fund budget of the state government. It wouldn't be paid or allocated back to school districts. It would be basically the legislature and the state government making up, taking responsibility for that 10 years of underfunding and not pushing that responsibility onto school districts. Currently, you know, I don't look at this as taking on $9 billion of new debt. I look at it as taking $9 billion out of $45 billion that we already owe and putting that on a disciplined, structured repayment schedule, especially now when interest rates are very low. We can probably borrow that money at about a 4% rate of return, or 4% interest rate, and, you know, if we hit our assumed rate of return of 7.5%, we're making money just on that interest rate float, but that's not what's driving it. The real reason for this borrowing is to make good with those years of underfunding with our employees. The third piece, then, is the current member modifications, and I believe I said earlier that we're not talking about changing that multiplier, we're not talking about changing the employee contribution. All we're talking about is two things. One is to change the lump sum formula, or the way you take your money at the end. One of those options that I went over is a lump sum withdrawal. The example I gave you, the individual was allowed to take $152,000 that they had invested into the account. They were able to take that in a check the day they retired. Under this proposal, they would still be able to do that, but their monthly benefit would be adjusted appropriately. Currently, it's only reduced by about 4%, so when, in fact, if you take your money out, we're losing 7.5% based on our assumed rate of return. So all we're really proposing is that if you're going to leave your money in, that should be no different than if you're going to take your money out. So if you're going to take your money out, that's fine. We would still allow that to happen, but your monthly benefit is going to be reduced by about, by the 7.5% that we would expect to earn had you kept your money into the fund. An example, I'll just give you an example. If somebody is going to retire with a $55,000 annual pension, the effect of this change would be to take their monthly payment from about $4,000 a month down to $3,700 a month. So it's real money, no question about that, but I think it's a relatively reasonable request if we're going to, if the Commonwealth's going to put $9 billion into the fund, and it really is an issue of fairness. There's no reason that that formula should be the way it is, that somebody who leaves their money, or takes their money out, gets an advantage over somebody who leaves their money into the system. The second request that we would make is on the final average salary. I think I said earlier that the formula in that box that's highlighted, it takes your highest three years of service, and that's what your formula is based on. So in the example I gave you, the gentleman that retired with an $81,000 salary went from 78 to 79 to 81 in his last, his or her last three years. All we're suggesting here is that if we take that over five years, it has the effect of reducing the tendency of some employees to find ways to bump up or spike their salary or their compensation in their final years of service. If you even that out over five years instead of three years, it has the effect of saving $6 billion to the fund over 30 years, and it would have a very minor increase, or a very minor effect on anybody other than people who have gone from, let's say, 70 to 90 to $120,000 in their last three years of service. So it's an anti-spiking provision that really is intended to address what can be an abuse of the system. Just, let's just jump forward to the, sort of, the bottom line chart, which is next after this. If we do all of the things that I mentioned, if we spread that out over the cash balance future employees, the borrowing, and the two changes to current employees, it has the effect of changing the employer contribution arc as follows. The blue line, hopefully you can see that, that would be what employers, school districts especially, will be required to pay if we don't do anything. It goes from about 16% where it is right now, it goes to 21.5% next year, and it crests up into the low 30%. So if we don't do anything, every school district is going to have to send 32% of their payroll into Harrisburg to PERS to pay their share of their employee pension contributions. If we make all of these changes, it's still going to go up, but it's not going to go up as steeply, and it's not going to go up as high. It crests out around 25%, and it stays there about the same time that it would have stayed, around 32 or 33%. So all of the area between the blue line and the red line is savings that will be realized by your school districts as a result of this whole package of reforms. Let's just, in the interest of time, let's just skip ahead to, yeah, this slide. There are some who say, well, we passed Act 120 two and a half years ago, let's just let Act 120 work. I just took a snapshot of the districts in this area to show you, if we just let Act 120 work, what will that mean to your school districts over the next five years? And you can see all of them, but I'll just read down through the first one. Huntington area school district, if we don't do anything, they'll pay about $853,000 in pension contribution this year. It goes to 1.1 million next year, almost 1.4 the year after that, over 1.5 the year after that, and 1.64 million in pension contribution over the next five years. So it, in each case, over the next five years, if we don't do anything, your school districts are going to be hit with a doubling of their pension contributions. I don't think that's fair, I don't think that's affordable, and it will make even strong school districts weak if we don't do anything. So I don't consider not doing anything an option. I've also given some other school districts up in this area. This information will be available if anybody wants it afterward. The benefits, I'm trying to achieve a compromise here. I've been talking all summer, as I said, to anybody who will listen, and we're trying to come up with something that is constitutional, it's fair, it's affordable, and it doesn't hurt anybody too badly, yet at the same time, it addresses the $45 billion problem. There would be savings to the general fund. There would be savings to the general fund. There have to be savings to the general fund, because the general fund is going to be the one picking up the debt service on that nine billion dollar borrowing. So, that works out to be about a wash, the savings to the general fund. However, the big benefit is to your school districts. That chart I showed you before, all that area between the blue line and the red line is savings to your school districts, so that they won't be hit with that doubling of employer contributions. The way we have the proposal, the rate of contribution would go from 16%, or actually 17% this year, to 18, to 19, to 20. It would go up gradually, it would still go up, but it would go up gradually and predictably, and it would never get nearly as high as it would if we don't do anything. Philadelphia school district, you've probably read in the papers, you know, what their situation is with their pension. There's, there's no advantage, there's no excess savings to the Philadelphia school district, but because their numbers are so large, there's a pretty big number attached to what the Philadelphia school district would save as well. I think it sends a very positive message to our bond rating agencies. We've actually been downgraded recently as a state, and one of the reasons that is specifically cited in those reasons for downgrade is because we have failed to address this growing pension liability. By doing this package of reforms, it sends a very positive message to those rating agencies, and if nothing, if it doesn't increase the ratings, it would at least stabilize those ratings. Current employees would retain their defined benefit plan, the same multiplier, the same employee contribution. The only impact they would have is those two impacts that they don't even realize until the day they retire. Future employees, under the cash balance plan, would have a very reasonable and sustainable retirement benefit, and it does provide a level of protection, especially to our school districts, when investment returns fall below what they are projected to. Under the current system, there is no shared risk. The taxpayer, the employer bears all of that risk, and, you know, that's a paradigm that we need to change. So, I appreciate you listening. I don't know how we are for time, Mike. I'm going to stick around. If we, if we have some specific questions, I'll be happy to try to deal with those. But, I'll turn the program back over to Mike at this point, and thank you very much for your attention.
Okay, that was extremely informative. Can you imagine how much I learned my first two years sitting in the near vicinity of Glengrave? Actually, as a freshman, I was pointing at, who's that and what do they do? But, no, Glenn is a great guy, and he's certainly knowledgeable about many issues, but when you look at his district, probably your average constituent works for the state. So, interesting. I'm going to start my PowerPoint now, we're going to try and catch up on some time here. Let's go to the next slide. As I said before, education has always been my passion, especially for rural areas, the ability to get a good education. Hopefully, that you can stay in the area and either start a small business, or complement a larger business, or what have you, or if you choose to go out in the world, make a good name for yourself for the education that you got here in Huntington County. And, I certainly believe we have some great schools, and I see several of the superintendents in attendance here this evening, and thank you for your attendance. This is our general budget, this is where the money goes. And, in some states, education funding is so big that they don't even refer to it as the general budget, they refer to it as the education budget. When you lump education with higher education, you now have the largest line item in the budget. When you look at public welfare, and it's, you know, the connotation that welfare brings, there's a lot of good services in welfare that also come out of that area agency on aging and what have you. We have a slice of the purple pie there, our debt service, most of that is thanks to Governor Ed Rendell. And, corrections, which is obviously a growing, something very important in our area with jobs and, but it's that all other, and you see the breakout here, all other that comes out of the 2.8, 2.6 billion, the 9% is agriculture, state police, department environmental protection, DCD, DCNR, and the legislature. And, those are ranked by the number, by the amount of money that they actually get. So, oftentimes, you know, two years ago, when we had the budget situation that we had a four billion dollar deficit, and people would be like, you know, "Cut here, cut here, don't cut there," most of what they were talking was in that small box, and even if we eliminated all that, we wouldn't have been able to balance our budget. Next slide, please. This is the graph showing how much the state has personally invested in education. Now, there's been a lot of rhetoric out there the last few years with education cuts. Obviously, the schools have taken a hit. What you see here happening in the last two years of the Rendell administration, why that went down, was the stimulus money went in, and it was used to backfill so that we could balance the budgets. And, when that came out, under the Corbett administration, and I'm, you know, not going to defend Governor Corbett, I certainly had supported the budget because we had a four billion dollar deficit. But, you can see that we're back giving historical numbers, but still, and with the rate of inflation, it hasn't caught up, and we've caught up, and we've seen some of the cuts that our school districts have been forced to make in programming, or not retaining, replacing teachers, and what have you. So, it definitely has a huge factor. Next slide. This has been something, cyber charter school reform has been something that dates back to my very first year on the Southern Huntington School Board, and that was some of the inequities. I think we have some good cyber charter schools. We have some excellent charter schools in the state. We also have some of the worst charter schools in the state. And, my goal was really to hold them to the same accountability that we asked regular public education. And, these are some of the reforms that I've proposed that are coming up this fall, that I believe that we will have a vote and will happen. Places a three-year moratorium on the consideration and approval of applications for new cyber charter schools. We have more cyber charter schools in Pennsylvania than any other state, other than Arizona. So, we do have a lot of options there. Eight of the applicants were denied by the Secretary of Education, the eight that applied last year. It also establishes limits on unassigned fund balances for charter and cyber charter schools that are identical to those already in place for traditional public schools. And, you can see there in the block, that is what we hold regular ed. What has happened is, for a cyber charter education, that, let's say XYZ Cyber Charter School in Huntington, which, you know, we don't have one, we may have online components with our school districts, but XYZ Cyber Charter School bills Huntington 75% of what their cost is to educate a student. So, that cost maybe, what, six, seven, eight thousand? Take 75% of that, compare that to Bucks County, where they, may, XYZ Charter School picks up 10 students. They are charging 15,000 to 20,000 per student, and they get 75% of that for the exact same curriculum. So, these schools have been able to sit on millions and millions and millions of dollars. We've had people indicted, we've, nepotism is rampant. You know, when the legislature approved this under the Ridge administration, no one expected cyber charter schools to grow at the rate that they did. But, they have, and, you know, they're here to stay, and I think they are a component of the overall package, certainly. It also requires charter and cyber charter schools to refund excess of some fund balances, and school districts that paid tuition to the charter or cyber charter schools in previous years. So, under my bill, that money will come back to that sending school. Next slide. It eliminates the cyber charter pension double dip with a two-year sunset. Now, what that means is, the state also pays a portion of your retirement cost for faculty and staff of those schools. Now, included in the formula of what the sending school district is also being billed for that. So, in essence, they are billing the state for a bill that's already been paid, which isn't illegal, but, you know, there's about 500 million there that could really benefit the local school districts, especially with the pension system issues that we have. Also includes ethics, transparency, governance, and auditing reforms. Now, keep in mind, they do not have an elected school board. Oftentimes, you know, and they appoint some good people, and sometimes they appoint some unscrupulous people, and we've had the middle management companies pop up in the middle where they're, you know, run by, you know, family members, and it's, it's just some really egregious behavior, first of all. Also improves academic quality. We just implemented a new teacher evaluation system, was voted on last year, this year's the first that it's being used. Teacher evaluation system that mirrored those required for traditional public schools. I had the amendment in committee when we did the evaluation proposal, that would also require charter and cyber charter teachers to be held to the same rigorous evaluation. It lost by one vote, there was lots of committee meetings that day, we barely had a quorum, and it was, it definitely needed, they need to be included. What we have created are two systems of education here. Longer renewed terms for high-performing charters and stronger enforcement of truancy laws. Right now, the sending school has to enforce truancy laws. So, if you have a student who's absent, but the charter school isn't working with you, you have no idea if that student is performing what they're doing, until they end up maybe coming back to your school district, and you find out that they haven't technically been in school, and you've been footing the bill, and academically now they're a little bit further behind, and you have to bring them up to speed and all that. We heard a lot about the Common Core standards that were implemented here in the past few, well, we can read down through here, it dates back to 1999. There's a lot of propaganda and misunderstanding of some of these core standards. I'm of the mindset, let's go to the next slide. Allow teachers to teach, and, not that, you know, we have overwhelming teachers teaching to the test, but as long as we have funding tied to that, and you're going to be graded in XYZ academic areas, you're going to be focusing on that, and then you miss out on, as I said, I'm a history major, if we forget our history, we're doomed to repeat it. And, so, that's, that's one of the things that has been concerned for me. We had a resolution on June 18th, calling upon the Secretary of Education and the State Board to review the new regulations. The State Board of Education oftentimes implements changes that we feel should come before the legislature. It's almost like when a judge legislates from the bench. That really gets legislators all worked up, because we were elected to make the laws, they were elected to enforce the laws, interpret the laws, and oftentimes, when they end up changing the laws, that makes for, you know, that skews the balance of powers amongst the three branches. Anyhow, last week, on, I guess Wednesday or Thursday, on the 12th, the State Board approved the revised regulations to address the concerns of the resolution, and to clarify that the standards only apply to public schools, there'll be no national test or assessments, expanded data collection will not occur due to the standards, and there'll be no required reading list or curriculum. The revised regulations now continue through the regulatory review process. So, we're getting there. Next slide. This is one of the issues that I hear the most about, next to Second Amendment issues, is property taxes. We all know that we pay property taxes, and we're paying an exorbitant amount of property taxes. Certainly, what the state pays in public education for our local public schools, I think Huntington probably receives the least amount of public support, but, you know, Southern Huntington, Mount Union, Geniata Valley, over 60% of the funding's coming from the state. You will hear from people in Montgomery County that they're maybe getting 10 to 15% funding. So, so much of our funding is reliant on the state. But, this started with Representative Sam Rohr a few years ago, I've always been on the bill, but it is almost like the unsolvable equation, and I'll tell you why. Property taxes bring in billions and billions of dollars. So, how do you replace that? And, I think it should be uniform, we catch, the ones who may not own property have people in the system. However, when you start removing the exemptions, that's when we started hearing the outcry. When you start taxing legal fees, you get the divorce attorneys that show up with, you know, sadly battered women who can't afford, and that makes the press, and then people get worked up, and we got to stay away from that one. Then, you find funeral directors, not taxed right now, and, you know, who wants to tax funeral services? I mean, it's pretty expensive to be buried now, you throw that on. Once you start nickel and diming each of these exemptions, you get down to, you know, it's going to be less than a small 1% increase in the sales and use tax, which is going into the general fund as we speak. Also, you start eliminating the property taxes, and you start losing people like, "Why doesn't Walmart have to pay taxes?" So, where do you draw the line? How big is a small business, how small is a big business? And, it gets bogged down, it gets less votes each time it runs. You know, last year, it was stymied in the Finance Committee. You know, I think it's good to have a good, healthy debate. I don't like to get people all whipped up and say, "Yes, we can do this, I mean, this is broad change," but I don't think we're there yet, under this legislature. I think we have a ways to go before we can, we can get to the point where we can totally overhaul our tax system. Next slide. This is Representative Zeph Groves' bill. It's a little bit more fathomable to happen, I believe, it gives some choices to local school districts, and it might be the perfect fit for some areas, and for others, perhaps not. Next slide. Teacher evaluations. This was something that was initiative of the Corbett administration. And, having served on the school board, we had evaluations, sometimes they were good, sometimes they were bad, but you want everyone to exceed. You do want to get rid of bad teachers. But, you know, the education's no different than what we have in private industry. You have people who are going above and beyond the call of duty, you know, staying, coming in early, leaving late, making sure that their kids are on task. You also have ones who are working the system. Same within private industry. And, I don't think that you ever get to 100% proficiency, because when you have one bad employee leave, you're going to probably, nine chances out of 10, through the luck of the draw, over the course of the year, get one in there. So, I don't know that education's any different, but we do have to make sure that, that our teachers are being properly evaluated, and it is subjective. You know, if you have a student who doesn't get to bed till 1:00 or 2:00 in the morning, and is woken up by 5:30, 6 o'clock, doesn't have breakfast, and education's not important in their home, they really don't care how they're performing in school. And, there's not a whole lot that that teacher can do to really entice them. And, we saw that with the voucher argument with, you know, failing schools. The failing schools were in struggling neighborhoods, and I firmly believe that education begins in the home. However, you know, evaluations, we all have them, mine's called an election. I heard a few chuckles there. So, my concern was it wasn't solely tied to test scores. Let's go to the next slide. To the next one, I believe, there's a pie chart. So, it goes from the observation where the superior, whether it's a principal or whomever, coming in, watching the teacher teach, elective data, school building data, how's the school performing? Teacher-specific data, you know, that is- Teacher's specific data, you know, that is, you know, "How is that teacher? What are their individual goals? What classes are they teaching?" And you come up with a framework that is a little bit more usable. You still want someone to, you know, you want your teachers to perform, you've invested a lot in them. And so if they, needs to be some remediation or what have you, want to bring them up to speed, but you also want to have the instruments to say, "Maybe teaching's not for you." And, you know, having served on the school board, I think there was one teacher, over the course of time, that we were able to say, "Guess what? You know, this isn't working for you or I or for the community." And, you know, we like to blame the teachers for some of the education standards, and, you know, I know, you know, same from the federal government. You know, we wanted to provide some incentives where, okay, you go into this failing school, and if you prove yourself, you know, we're going to, you know, tie these merit increases to your performance. However, if you don't, we're going to take your certificate. So, I mean, that's a pretty good gamble out there with some of the schools to really put, you know, I know that's one I wouldn't want to take, but let's go into the next slide. Questions? Do we have any questions? Either myself, or I see Glenn is hiding out in the background, or... Thank you so much. I appreciate you all being here. My office door is always open, and certainly, I thank my staff, Keith Black, Peggy Brown, and Monica Cost is running the PowerPoint, as well as Dave Transu is our executive director. Stand up, Dave. Dave's our executive director for the House Education Committee. He has vashed years of knowledge, and the fact that he can work with a bunch of legislators proves that he can do anything. So, all right. Yes?
Is there any state legislature that are also going to adopt the same [inaudible]?
That's a lot to ask. Yeah, I'm not being funny there, I was trying to. Certainly, anything that is going to be implemented will affect us, and probably will affect us at a greater degree just because, to get everyone else on board, we're going to have to, you know, show the initiative, to show that we're game, certainly. Any other questions? Yes?
I know amongst school board members, you were concerned about the data collection of the Common Core [inaudible], also the mandatory reading lists. That was [inaudible].
Correct. We're still, we're still working on, that is correct, right? No reading list.
And then [inaudible].
We have to have standards. I mean, you just can't turn people loose and hope that when they, you know, get to 12th grade, that everyone is able to get to college and, you know, if they were academically prepared. So I think that was the role that the legislature was, you know, has always looked at. You know, you get into this quagmire with the State Board, and them having a different idea of where they want to go, and of course, that's like, education's no different than any other commissioner board that's out there. But certainly, we heard the outcry on that. We want to provide the models that school districts can excel and say, "This works for us, and this is, you know, what our faculty and staff can buy into, and this is how we're going to help our students succeed." So at the end of the day, that's what I want to see happen, that, you know, right now, you can get an excellent education at any of our schools. What I hate to see is, you know, we've had some pretty severe programming cuts in the last few years, and, you know, we were predominantly fiscally prudent in our decisions that we made here. And so, you know, when some of these cuts, whether it was federal or, you know, some certain line items or grant money dried up for, you know, a teacher's salary, that has a certain, that trickles down to what we're able to provide. But, you know, I'm certainly grateful to all the superintendents here who make our schools function with what they have, certainly. Any other questions? Thank you.